We are reconvening as the Waukesha County Council in Legislative Session 2018-21 for September 18th, 2018. We're continuing with the open work session schedule. I'm going to move a couple of things around here. That being, we will move the airport work session as the next item on the agenda, the amendment to the fiscal year 19 to 2023 capital improvement program. And I know Ms. Dawn Veach is here today. Good morning. All right. Good afternoon. How are you?
Good.
Good to see you. If you could just state your names and titles for the public, that would be great. Thank you.
John Longmaker with Delta Airport Consultants, the project manager for the airport.
And I'm Dawn Veach, the airport manager for Salisbury Regional Airport.
Why don't you start, Dawn?
Good morning, and thank you for having me today. You have a handout in front of you, and it's very short, but I wanted to lay some foundation for our request to reallocate some excess funds into another project that was already approved in the CIP. But I wanted to at least explain why. On the first page, we basically, in the county, do our planning November, December for CIP, and then it goes to June when the budget is approved, as you know, for our county. The state, they ask for our capital improvement plans sometimes as early as December. This year, it was in February when we finally rolled that up. And then the FAA and MAA do theirs concurrently together, so it's one project for, because they supplement our grant programs.
MAA is Maryland.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maryland Aviation Authority, which is the state, also provides funding. So if you go to the next page, last year in December, and then later in June, the county council approved our budget. And in that budget, there was a request for STARS, which is an automated system that is new technology that basically replaces radar. And it also provides communication, not only just from the controller at the radar to the airplane back and forth, it lets airplanes also see the other airplanes in their geographic area. So it provides a better surveillance, and it's part of what everybody calls Next Gen on TV and other FAA publications. In May, I got an email from the airport, the air traffic main office in Atlanta that said, basically, that STARS is no longer being supported into the national airspace system due to the fact that Raytheon, the manufacturer, is no longer producing it, nor are they providing product support, because there's a newer type of technology that's out there now. So with that, the Maryland state funding that was given to us by MAA, which would have augmented your funding, that was given to me in full, they pulled their grant because we couldn't install.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes.
You say that they discontinued the STARS because there's new technology?
Yes.
Wouldn't they, what would prevent everyone from just transferring those funds on all levels to the new technology?
Because we're not eligible for the FAA new technology. So you have to have a certain number of operations at an airport. For example, Easton has STARS, but they didn't get it through the FAA procurement because they don't have enough activity, number of airplane operations per year and types of operations. So when you buy it on your own, it's considered a non-federal procurement. And when they accept that into the national airspace system, air traffic has to be able to take that component, and they manage that data, and it goes through all their systems. They got that because of Dick Cheney.
Well, with the STARS being approved as a high priority, and now you're saying it's not being addressed at all, what is it that we're, what will we be lacking if we obviously have to forego this?
Okay, so right now, our tower is a non-federal tower. We pay a contract for that service. That service, being non-federal, means that they can only land aircraft visually. So they're not allowed to operate with a radar environment. Now Pax River does our approach control, which hands incoming aircraft off to the tower at Salisbury. They can see them so far, but then there's a void because we don't have ADS-B, we don't have a radar. So what happens is, they will clear the pilot for the approach, and until they cancel on the ground, either through radio communication or a phone call, if the radios don't reach well, if the tower's closed, they can't release or enter another aircraft. So it ties up airspace when you're busy and the weather's bad. So basically Pax River will have an aircraft coming in, they'll clear them for the approach. Once they can no longer see them, the pilot is basically already established on the approach, so it's a safe operation. But they can't let another aircraft in that airspace because they can't see it. Whereas normally, if you look at any other large airport, they've got gazillions of airplanes in there, one right back after the other, and we can't have that opportunity to feed more traffic.
Right. Well, if we had wanted the STARS program, and we consider it to be an integral part of advancing our operations.
Correct.
With it now, you're now saying it's been discontinued, what will we be substituting for that so that we can continue on?
So we will substitute, and I'll show you in the rest of the presentation, ADS-B. That request I have with STARS.
That was part of what we approved as well.
Yes, with STARS and ADS-B. So what that will give us is situational awareness in the tower cab, to where they can see all the aircraft. So it gives them better guidance, better situational awareness, better separation. But unless that feed goes to Pax River, Pax River still is restricted from releasing them on the ground until the pilot reports he's on the ground.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no. Good questions. Thank you. So this year, and basically, I think it was end of June, 1st of July, the FAA announced there was another billion dollars in supplemental discretionary money, which means lots of things. But at the end of the day, it means that we could accelerate our runway extension project up earlier. We had a meeting with the FAA last week, got huge support from them to push this project forward instead of the five to seven years it could take. With the discretionary money coming in, it frees up other money, and it allows the FAA to put ours on a fast track. So because of that, it actually accelerated our need for the environmental assessment. That is part of the runway extension project that was approved in the CIP last year.
I got a question.
Yes.
Has the runway, when was the last time it was extended?
2010, I believe.
2010. I know there was property around there that the county bought.
Yes, sir.
For that.
Yes.
And it looks like we're going to buy more property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that environmental study that was done for that project was done in 2003?
Three.
Three. So there has not been an updated environmental on this airport since 2003. And basically, we're required to update our master plan every five years to include the environmental. So we're way behind on doing things of that nature as far as a routine keep-up with the types of things.
How long is that environmental, uh, six months?
We hope only a year.
It takes a year to complete?
It normally takes a lot longer, but we're hoping we've got it on a fast track. So if you look at the county, the next page has just the summary of where STARS was input. It was $600,000 that was granted in my budget. And then if you look at the next page, STARS and ADS-B was basically $600,000. The ADS-B component is $130,000. And that comes with display monitors for the tower, for our drone facility, and for anybody else that needs a monitor to look at traffic inbound, outbound. And it also gives a very, very excellent projection of weather, which, right now, the folks in our tower use weather.com, the Weather Channel, they have some local weather that's just immediate over the airport, but not the whole surface of things coming and going. This will give a lot broader, broader reach. And then the detection system that I will be marrying up with the ADS-B for the drones will be able to put all the drones on that ADS-B display so that you can see the aircraft and the drones that are operating within our program. So if you add all that up, it leaves about $420,000. The environmental assessment is estimated to be about $900,000. Because we're in the middle of the fiscal year already, only six to seven months would need to be paid for, because it'll be budgeted out in increments over accomplishments. So we would end up needing $450,000, which is almost exactly what we have there. So with that, I'm just requesting reprogramming of previously allocated, and both projects were approved in the CIP for the county, and reallocate that money to the assessment, the environmental assessment, so we can move that forward.
Any questions? Oh, the only question I guess I would have is, and I don't have the breakdown on the long-term itemization, but with the, yeah, I do have that thing.
Well, this is both, the other one too.
Yeah. I have that too, thanks. What I was wondering, though, is that if you were, if we're going to take that $420,000 and apply that towards runway extension?
Yes, sir.
In reference to environmental assessment, are there further, are there other sections in the CIP that also would need to be amended where we would be removing similar funding $420,000 from future years of planning in runway extension or environmental studies?
Not at this time. I think once we get to this year's planning for CIP, those adjustments will get done there. Because basically, you can't put your foot forward again until the assessment is done. They won't let you hardly do anything. So because we're coming up on our planning cycle again, those adjustments will be made for 2020, '21 to accelerate the runway extension, which we're very hopeful it will be digging shovels at the end of calendar year 2020.
Well, it just appears that without taking any other, making any other adjustments, that in taking the $420,000 and applying it to the environmental assessment, we're front-loading what we've already approved.
Yes, sir.
For that. So I would think that if we were amending the CIP to a certain degree, you would say, well, we're putting the $420,000 in 2018, 2019, excuse me, then that would be a $420,000 that should be coming off the next year. And I know it's very flexible.
No, it could, but there's also additional expenses that will roll into next year because everything's rolling forward, if you will, from 2021 will now roll into '20, because the whole program is going to a three-year program instead of seven. And hopefully, it will keep American Airlines and Piedmont here, which is the whole reason for accelerating this runway.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from anybody?
I see in here where we approved the STARS and the ADS-B equipment for $600,000?
Yes, sir.
But where is it that we approved the detection receiver at?
It was in my other budgets. It's not really capital improvement, it's just a technology under hardware.
So it was approved in the budget last year?
I do believe so. It's part of the drone facility, the drone hangar that we were building.
Mm-hmm.
Because it was a product that went with the hangar. I didn't bring that item, line item with me as a breakdown.
Any other questions?
This property hasn't been purchased yet. We've got the contract here.
Property?
There's property that you put in here. Isn't that what we're looking at?
I think that's the next work session.
In the work session, there's some things we're looking at, but that's.
Let right into it.
I'm sorry.
No, it's not your fault.
And that may not be the correct version. I brought an updated one today.
Okay.
This does require a public hearing, and we can have that at the next council meeting, October the 2nd.
Counsel located us? All right, we're good?
All right.
That's what we'll do.
Okay.
We'll do it. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Thanks for being here. Sorry to hold you up.
No, that's fine.
Next item on the agenda is the surplus, no, is the economic impact, excuse me, store management update. I'll go through that.
How are you?
Good. Good morning. This will probably be in here.
Is that your desk?
Any help there?
No, I just, if I can plug these in one of two ways, the first time I pick is going to be wrong.
How does that feel? Now, what you're doing today is what we also have, that you distributed to us on a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Correct.
Correct.
So on that, you definitely want to be on.
Okay. Yeah, we can see it. But you couldn't see it. Okay. To North Carolina? No.
Puts it in perspective.
Yeah, I was, I had kept my calendar clear on Friday and Monday, and was quite happy to turn those into productive days instead of tied up with emergency response.
I don't know if I told you, I went to Atlantic City to take a look at that.
Uh-huh.
They've got their hands full there, too.
Yeah.
That's a forever project.
Yeah, yeah. Second time, too.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So update on what we've been doing since we met last in May. So.
Let me see if we can get you.
Okay. Go ahead, Allison, hold up. All right. Just an update on, you know, we've been seeing significant rain in the area over these last couple of weeks. But just to follow up, NOAA had published some precipitation data for the country, and Maryland actually fell in the second wettest July in the entire country. So Pennsylvania ranked 124, and, yeah, we ranked 123. So we had four and a half inches over our national, our historical average. So we're still continually seeing these large, large rain events. So I'm going to start with the one that's gotten the most attention, which is Pratt Road. We've completed that drainage study. I believe that should have been included in the pack if you all received. And in a nutshell, we had the study break down, the overall drainage shed, which is roughly 330 acres, into different chunks of projects that we can implement over the coming years. One of those, and there's, we had them break out the design costs and the construction costs for each. So starting on the upstream end, the Hunter's Mill Pond, one of the recommendations was to enlarge their stormwater pond. That includes the design cost of about $15,000 and the construction of $180,000.
Just a question. What part of this, these upgrades fall to the county, and what part of these upgrades fall to the homeowners association?
Good question. Good question. The other issue is, when we're getting into some of these areas to make improvements, do we have easements? And the answer to most of that is no, we don't. A lot of these improvements are being recommended for areas that are outside of county-owned right-of-way. One school of thought is to, you know, a lot of these projects, when they were built back in the 80s, were built to the standards at the time. And because we're seeing these larger rain events, one thought is, do we go in, make these improvements, and then tell them, hey, all right, now it's back on you, HOA, we've gotten you up to where you can handle the current storms, now it's up to you guys to maintain it? Do we, I mean, realistically, these construction costs are beyond what these HOAs are going to be able to afford, you know? They might have put a couple thousand dollars away to clear out vegetation out of their swales, you know, maybe do a little bit of excavating, but, you know, these are capital construction costs. There are, and I'll talk about this later, there are some grants out there available, and the thought process is to take these projects and start using them as our basis for applying for grants. One of the benefits with the stormwater management pond, because it was built in the 80s, it did not include water quality. We could potentially add in a water quality element and qualify for additional whip-type and MS4-type projects, grant projects. So that's, that's my thought moving forward, is to take these and break them out. So, did you have a question?
Yep. We're done with that.
Okay. Could I make a comment on that real quickly? You may be aware of it, Dallas, but the city of Salisbury has just done something like that with Aaron Moore, the subdivision that's out, what is it, on Dyke Road, I think? And they had essentially the same type of problem, at least it sounds like it to me. I've been at a couple of city council meetings recently, for other reasons. But they've done a deal where they're handling the engineering and the contracting part, but the homeowners apparently are contributing, I think, 100% of the cost for doing it over a period of time, and I don't know exactly what that is. But there might be, that might be kind of a prototype, maybe, to look at in terms of this question of who pays, what portion, and how do you get the money? It's just a thought, you know, that they've done that. I mean, they're in the current right now of getting it all set up.
Well, as a matter of perspective, though, Mr. Taylor, it could be that Aaron Moore, and I don't know the circumstances, but it could be that they're addressing their concerns for their problems. We're having issues where these issues are creating problems for other areas.
Well, it depends, obviously, on the particular circumstances, but there are, at least there in some of these cases, in the past presentations, it sounds like at least part of it is the homeowners association responsibility, probably under their initial stormwater management agreement. So it's just, I mean, it's just obviously not, one size doesn't fit all.
Yeah. And the Pratt Road case, there, this is more than just a, oh, the homeowners didn't maintain it. These are dramatically changing some of the original designs of their approved plans that, again, when, due to the age, when they were originally approved, they built to the standards. But again, we're seeing, as that first slide shows, you know, we got more water in July than 48 other states in the country. So 49 other states in the country.
Well, on to John's point, I mean, on with Hunter's Mill, the flooding is not really affecting them, you know, the homeowners in that development, it's affecting people next to them. And so it's going to be harder to get buy-in from the people there. So, you know, because this, what they're doing there is having, you know, problems with other people throughout the county. So it's definitely a touchy situation on, you know, how to get homeowners associations to pay, and, you know, these huge costs is definitely not budget of Hunter's Mill or really any other homeowners association. So it's, I don't know, yeah, it's something that's kind of a tough nut to crack here.
Mm-hmm.
You ready for me?
Yeah, sure.
In reference to John's question, I have another one. The PDA's public drainage ditch, the tax, the tax ditches, they're addressed, called, you visited the site with us at Wollston Switch?
Mm-hmm.
And it was pretty obvious that that ditch on the, I'll call it, on the upside of Wollston Switch Road, upstream side of Wollston Switch Road needed cleaning out. We saw that, we seen it was filled in. I had a question posed to me by Mr. Price, the gentleman that brought these problems to us. He's not getting any reaction from the PDA. What control do we have over the PDAs and the work they do? We know they tax the citizens, they put it into a fund, but then if they don't use that money to keep the PDA up, where do we, where do we fall into that equation as far as what can we do to make sure work gets done?
I would suggest holding that question for next month, because October 16th, we come back before you, with the Maryland Department of Agriculture, who oversees the tax ditches association.
Okay.
And they're going to be giving a presentation to council about how tax ditches are established, what's the process, do we get new ones, how do we maintain the existing ones? And I think they'd be better suited to answer that question. The short answer is, I can find out.
Yeah, well, that's fine.
But it would probably be finding out from them.
You know, I'm asking, that question was asked of me and asked to ask, so I may have tried to have him at the meeting, so he'll get a better understanding of it, too. And I'm not saying that the tax ditch association in that case is not doing their job, but maybe they don't recognize what needs to be done quite as much as he does, doing, he's the one that's having the problem.
Yeah.
Right. So they'll be here on the 16th.
Yeah, they're here October 16th for a presentation.
Are they the same ones I met with, with you on Mount Hermon Road?
No, that was State Highway Administration. This is the Maryland Department of Agriculture, the folks down off of Nanticoke Road will be coming out and giving that presentation.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Excuse me. So again, we talked about the enlarging Hunter's Mill stormwater pond, making some revisions to the outfall, altering the drainage path so that it doesn't discharge onto Pratt Road, but instead basically bypasses Pratt Road and then comes in on the backside behind the houses that are flooded and ties into the swale that connects Pratt to Pemberton. You see the design cost there of $6,500, and the construction estimate of $134,000. There are some, the third project, the Hounds Base Circle, there are some ditches that feed into the Hunter's Mill Pond that are currently concrete lined. We believe we can take those concrete liners out, which will enable the ground to absorb some of that stormwater before it gets to the pond, thereby starting to mitigate some of those projects, or some of that stormwater, and reduce what's going into the pond and reduce the flooding downstream. The other three recommended projects were reestablishing the ditch between Pemberton and Pratt. Now, part of this is, when they say reestablish, in the previous slide, you saw where there would be a new connection coming in behind the houses. We would need to revise the grading of the Pratt-Pemberton ditch to accept flow from the new ditch that was coming in from behind the houses. And some of this work could potentially be done through in-house forces. Cleaning out ditches is something that Public Works is more than capable of doing. We just need to know what grades that this, the revised profile would need to be.
So once Public Works does that work, who's going to maintain it afterwards?
Well, currently, Public Works maintains this ditch, even though it's technically, there's no county easement for it. We maintain the ditch, but there's no easement for it. It's just something that we do for the citizens in the area.
Well, that should help.
Yeah. Another proposed project is an additional pipe underneath Pemberton Drive connecting from that ditch to the center swale in Royal Mile. We have to kind of go a certuous route around that existing structure in front of Westnessdale. This is, depending on workloads at the time, this also is a project that's potentially able to be handled in-house for construction, but it's a significant project. I mean, you're talking probably about, for us to do this in-house, it's probably about a month or so. And then the last project is the Nistale ditch reestablishment. As you may remember, there was significant erosion caused by the August 2017 storm, when all of that water that was just shown flowed, or that flowed, all of the water from the area I just showed flowed into the ditch running through Westnessdale and into the river. It caused about a six-foot-deep channel to get eroded through. And again, that construction cost is a little over $50,000. One thing I want to point out, these projects need to be thought about in terms of staging their construction. We need to make the, most of the improvements need to work in a downstream-to-upstream process. We don't want to start dumping more water on the folks in Nistale until we've improved that system and they can handle it. Otherwise, we're going to. Otherwise, we're going to cause further damage. That said, there are several projects, a couple of these projects can be done that will not impact it.
Yes, one more question first.
Yes.
On the Pratt-Pemberton ditch reestablishment, we don't have any, anything in code or anything like that that, that states that people who have a ditch in front of their house in the county are responsible for keeping that ditch in good condition?
For the, for the Nistale ditch, that all is in the Nistale's HOA.
Right, but I mean, with the Pratt-Pemberton, I mean, it looks to me like you're saying that the county's gonna spend fifty thousand dollars to clean out ditches that the homeowner should be cleaning out, if that is their responsibility. But I don't know if it is, that's why I'm asking. Is there anything in the books that literally says, if you own a house, a ditch, it's your responsibility to keep that ditch clean?
In, in cases where there is an HOA.
Not, not in HOA. Right there, Pratt, Pratt and Pemberton.
John, you run into all kinds of problems there, because environmental, environmentally, it's, Dallas, I tell you, sometimes you can't clean these ditches out, you're not allowed to.
Right, but this is part of what I thought we were gonna try to work through the next year, is to find out who's responsible, was, and I know MDE's involved.
Right, right.
DNR's gonna get into it, I'm sure.
That's the problem, you know, lifting leaves out of the bottom might be okay, but if you get a scoop full of dirt, then you're in trouble.
Right.
You know, that's, that's where you run into your problems.
And there's, specifically in this case, you know, one of the challenges, you know, this is more than just a shovel and a rake job. This is a grade all and, 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 you know, excavator job. I mean, it, it, it's beyond it. And you're, you're transporting it from Pratt Road to Pemberton, there's, realistically, there's only five houses that back up onto that ditch, and which, which HOA or property owner is responsible?
The reason I ask you this, the reason I ask you this is because if you go down Pratt Road, you're gonna see some ditches in front of those houses that are in immaculate condition.
Correct.
And yet, what it looks, it appears to me at first glance that what you're suggesting is that even though those people went to the trouble to maintain their ditch, what the county's gonna do is gonna, we're gonna take care of everybody else's, where they possibly should have done it themselves. And I have no idea whether it's established in any type of code in McComber County, whether that responsibility is incumbent upon those people, or whether there's really just nothing, and, and we are responsible for it. That's what I was hoping we were gonna sort out in this whole, you know, this whole issue.
Well, and I think there's, well, John, this ditch, you remember, this is that big ditch, it's, I mean, it's more like a creek than a ditch. I mean, it's not that it's just right in front of the houses, this is that big, one of the big waters.
Yeah, if I stand in it, it's coming up to my head.
Yeah, so, you know, stuff like that, I think, is probably more of a county responsibility, but like the ditches in front of the houses, I think that's what you're right about, is that you figure out, you know, some, like, like John's saying, some ditches are great, some ditches, you know, people dump their leaves in, and so, but this, I mean, something, a big thing like this, I mean, I agree with you, there's, you know, unless the homeowner has a, you know, a management bank or something.
I understand, and, but I didn't understand, I thought this was the, the distance of the road with the ditches, this evidently must be something I'm not aware of.
No, this is the one that, you know, where they all collect and go, goes north to south, it runs north to south, you know, by the side of those houses where the culvert was taken, you know, where it goes around like that.
Okay.
So this is that big one. But no, the ones in front of the house, John's right, we gotta figure out if people can...
Yeah, and, and generally, if, if the ditch is in our right-of-way, the county maintains it. I mean, there are some ditches that are outside of our right-of-way, and they're expected to be maintained by the property owners or the HOAs, as the case would be. There, there are numerous ditches in the county that, that drain roads that don't belong to us, and we look to the property owners to, to maintain them.
And you mentioned they're expected to be maintained. Since they're expected to be maintained, who monitors, patrols, or enforces these ditch cleanups?
There, there isn't one. We, we do not have a force that goes out and proactively inspects. And we have a stormwater management inspector, but that, he's out inspecting the ponds, he's not walking through the woods behind someone's house saying, is this ditch being maintained? And typically, we don't go out and, and look at them until a problem arises to see if...
Is that something we should be proactive about, instead of waiting for a problem?
In, in an ideal, in an ideal world, yeah.
That means a code enforcement officer, you know, bringing the fines and...
But I mean, it's gonna fall back on us when there's flooding.
No, I, I think we had this discussion at the outset of, of this whole study.
Right.
I'm not aware of any authority the county has to enter private property and do any work on private property. And I think you recall, going back, Joe, to the PDAs, we had the same discussion, so that, for instance, John in Nutter's Crossing, you know, if, if, if they weren't maintaining the, the stormwater management systems on the golf course, county doesn't have any right to go into the golf course and say, you're not maintaining this properly, so we're gonna come in and we're gonna do it. So, if we're contemplating those sorts of activities, then I think we have to determine how we get the legal authority to do that. Then, to your point, Larry, then how do we fund it so that we have the people with the expertise to do that?
Well, there was a point in time, since you brought up Nutter's, there was a point in time where someone from the county, I actually met them, and we did walk through all the common areas that were the responsibility, the homeowners association, and he literally said, that tree's gotta get cut down, this ditch needs to be cleared. Now, where that might have gone after that threat, I have no idea, but we just did what was supposed to be done.
Yeah.
So there was some type of...
We'll investigate that, but I'm not aware, I mean, unless you are, Bob, I'm not aware of anything that's codified.
Yeah, I think, I think there are two situations, and I'm not aware of anything that's codified either, but let's just talk about a plain county road that has a drainage ditch along it that's to drain off of the road. I mean, normally, the private property owner that's adjacent to it would not be responsible for that ditch, even, even if it happens to be on his property.
Correct.
That's, that's kinda what we're looking for, Bob, we're kinda trying to establish that.
But if that's the purpose of the ditch, now, if the homeowner's put in a ditch for some other purpose, or if he's draining into the county's responsibility ditch that might somehow affect it either there or further downstream, then that might be a different matter. And then second, the other aspect of it is, you've got, of course, your stormwater management agreements. There might, in the case of the golf course, and I'm not at all familiar with it, there might possibly be a stormwater management agreement. There are for, for most subdivisions that were created in the last probably thirty-five years, there's probably a stormwater management agreement. And now, what it covers is, is up to that particular agreement and what was done, done at the time, but, so that's, that's, I think, kind of a broad overview. But I think just generally, a drainage ditch along a county road, unless there's an agreement that that's gonna be maintained by somebody other than the county, that's the county's baby.
Yeah, that's, and it is good to know, and whether it's on a road, or whether it's a ditch that is between two individuals, two, two homeowners' properties, you know, who has the, you know, who's responsible for that.
Well, and then possibly in some of the, in some of the newer subdivisions, there might be ditches along the road that are under the stormwater management agreement. It's at least a possibility.
Do you think that that's where West Nistale falls into some type of stormwater management agreement?
Yeah, they, I, I guarantee you they have a, a stormwater management agreement, but again, that's, that's for looking at their, at their pond and their, their internal drainage structure. The HOA is responsible for maintaining the, the swales, but when you get to these levels of storms that are doing the damage, you know, I mean, you, you see the price tags a lot of the normal storms, aren't capable of...
That's what concerns me.
Yeah, there are really two different issues. One is, if we could go back to the subdivision and development documents for West Nistale, look at it and say, okay, what, what were the, the stipulations and, and are they being abided by? Secondarily, however, if that engineering isn't, is not sufficient to handle today's rainfall, today's storms, then we have to have some sort of authority to say, okay, now we have to go back on that private property, and it has to be re-engineered, we have to construct different apparatus to handle the stormwater, which means we're entering and disturbing private property. And, and, and that can get fairly interesting, I think, from a legal standpoint, and I just don't have any foundation, you know...
But if we stand back and do nothing, we're gonna hear from private citizens about not doing anything.
But, on, on the other hand, if, if we, let's say we, we took the ditch in Nistale as the first project, and we went and said, Nistale, we've applied for grants, we've got designs, we're ready to come in and fix this, and the HOA says, no, at that point, there's, you know, we, we've done what we can as their, as their officials to try to help them, because they've asked us for help, but if they're not letting us on the property to do the work, you know, that's on them.
But if it affects another development or different property, then that's where the problem is.
And, and I believe at that point, when it's, yeah, you're, you're right.
Unfortunately, that's where you begin, if it's for public good, that's unfortunately where you begin to tiptoe into eminent domain.
Well, and I think if you explain that we're starting downstream, and that if you don't let us do it here, we're gonna fix the upstream, and there's gonna be, you know, more, you're gonna get more water. And so there's, I mean, these homeowners associations, I know that Sentinel Village, that I'm a part of, you know, they recognize that these are problems, and the part problem is they don't have the resources to deal with these things. So it's not, I don't think there's a lack of will, it's just, it's such an overwhelming problem, and, you know, Barrington Ridge is another one that's just, you know, how do we deal with this now? Is there any help from the county to do it? And so that's what we have to figure out, is to what extent the county wants to be involved with these things and, that are spilling out into the wider public. I mean, it's not just about the homeowners association, it's how it affects the drainage there and, you know, a couple miles away even, so I don't think there's an easy answer, but we have to talk about it.
And, and we should, and we will be, to an earlier point, investigating what state and federal funds are available to underwrite this kind of work, because we're not the only state or the only county in the country that is, is, is being damaged by these very, very unusual weather patterns, which are forecast to continue. So, at some point in time, the various levels of government have to understand that the citizens who are being impacted don't have the wherewithal to pay for this out of their own household income. So we have to figure out, okay, how, how can we afford to fund this? Today, I don't know, but we should certainly look into that vigorously.
You know, you, you talk about, I know Larry's mentioned it, about making people, you know, keep their ditches clean. When you run into rain events like we've had in the past couple of years, if somebody's upstream from a property that water travels through, and we have a, an excessive rain event, this person upstream can say, well, my water's not draining because of his property. I mean, his ditches might be fine, but due to the amount of rain, so does that then fall back on this pro, person downstream to make sure the person owns the property upstream has proper drainage? So you're getting a whole, a whole lot of problems here that could never be solved. You know, it's...
So we're opening a can of worms?
Yeah, it really is. I mean, there's, especially when you get in your rural areas and your farmland, and you're, I know we've basically been talking about developments, when you get talking about large tracts of land and things like that, so...
Yeah, the West Nistale redevelopment, I, I went, I went into that, that neighborhood at the last storm that we had, and it was kinda interesting. The water seems to die out, even though the water was coming over Pemberton, and we were having to put the, the, the wrap or whatever it was in there to protect it where we had the problem with the boat that was clogging up the culvert. The ditch is next to it, where Lee was in there, you know, pulling stuff out, all this water was coming to this general area, but the Nistale, where it supposedly, I guess, is supposed to eventually funnel to, and you got about two-thirds of the way down, it's almost as if it just died out. And I thought, well, maybe the, the way the water table is, or the clay structure underneath, that the water just decided not to go as far as it, as it maybe needed to, because that full length of the entrance of West Nistale, there's, I mean, it's a really wide ditch or whatever it is, you can't call it a ditch, I don't know what you call it, but it's huge.
Yeah.
And it was taking the water quite sufficiently.
And that, and that's an example of where you have a, a, a ditch and culvert system that was designed to handle more than just your ten-year storm. It, it could handle it, so it had that capacity in there.
So in this re, reestablishment, ditch reestablishment that you're referring to here, are you talking directing more of the water to that particular area so that it can give some relief, or what are they, what are they recommending here?
The, the ditch reestablishment is not for the swale that's running down the middle of Royal Mile. This is what's running behind the houses, where it eventually emerges its way into the river.
Right, I know where that was, yeah, I, I saw that.
Yeah, that, that's what we're talking about, because...
That's like a creek.
Yeah, it, it, it's huge, and as you can see the drop-off in that picture, I mean, that's another example of, you can't tell, but I can stand in that thing and it's over, over my head. That needs to get fixed, this is on the back of somebody's property. This gentleman's child's playground equipment i- is five feet from the edge of this, it wasn't there before the August storm, and if we send, if we do all these upstream improvement projects and send more water down, he's gonna continue to experience more and more land loss and more and more damage. So that's why I just wanna highlight that, you know, when we do start approaching these projects, we, we need to start in the downstream area.
Yeah.
Now, there are a couple upstream. If we go in and increase the size of the Hunter's Mill Stormwater Pond, that's just going to reduce the amount of water going to them, because it's gonna store it. So there are some projects that we can do upstream that are not gonna send more water down. Ripping out that concrete liner and those, and those swales back there to let the water infiltrate in the ground is gonna reduce the water going downstream. So there are some, but I, I would not advocate, for instance, installing another thirty-inch pipe under Pemberton, until we have fixed the swale behind this gentleman's house so that it could accept that water and not tear apart the land.
Correct.
And that's all, that's just the engineering.
So what are you doing to prevent the erosion, once you take up that concrete or that, that gentleman's land? Are you putting down vegetation or what?
Yeah, yeah, it would be regraded at a proper slope. A lot of the, those concrete lined areas were, are basically almost a flat slope. They've been silted in over the years from not being maintained, so we would scoop that, we, we'd rip the concrete liner out, put a proper slope on it so that the water's getting to the, to Hunter's Mill. Water would drain into the, or infiltrate into the ground on its way to the stormwater pond. The stormwater pond would be bigger, so now we're holding back more water, so it's not overtopping Pemberton Drive on a, on a five-year storm, and, and again, making these improvements.
Wouldn't, wouldn't those concrete liners have been put in there for a purpose of eliminating reo, erosion, to keep from, you know, further maintenance on the long term?
Um, sort of, I'll, I'll say that, in the sense that the slopes in those particular swales are almost flat, so they were not put in for an erosion purpose. Sometimes liners are used for erosion. In, in the case of these particular swales, again, it's flat, it's, the water's not moving, moving very fast. A lot of times what we saw is back in the eighties and even in the early nineties, the concrete liners were put in just for ease of maintenance. You knew where to stop digging with your shovel, because you hit concrete and you just scrape everything out and clean it out real nice and easy. But over the years of not being maintained, you end up with six, eight inches of silt on top of a concrete liner that's got grass growing out of it, it's just not doing what it was intended to do. So not only is it not being maintained, it's not infiltrating into the ground, so you're just, other than that little bit of...
There's also a change of philosophy in stormwater management. Back with the concrete, they wanted to get the water off-site as quick as possible. Now they want infiltration, so they got rid of the concrete, want you to soak in and not just discharge it for nutrient management.
Concrete speeds up the flow of the water, which is counter to what all the professionals are doing now.
They don't want you to just dump it in the river now, they want you to suck it back into the soil.
Yeah, yeah.
Increases resistance.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
I have one question about, when you do the stormwater pond enlargement.
Yes.
And if you do any more of those around the county, is there any potential to use some of the spoil from that for landfill coverage purposes? Could we kind of dual-use?
Oh, yeah, potentially, yeah. I mean, I, I would think that if, if the county is the one that's facilitating this, we, that are, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
And it might be that dirt is what comes out of that pond and goes in the back to reestablish this swale.
Right.
So there are potential repurposes.
We can get rid of the dirt.
What's that?
We can get rid of the dirt.
Yeah, it just might get us excited to wanna do some of the work ourselves if we can utilize that dirt that comes out of there.
Yeah, I, I got a whole pile of dredging material I can dump in there and throw frag mighties really good.
Get ponds so we can have some power for it.
Put ponds everywhere, really good.
So our next project I wanna talk about is the, we've completed our survey of the Cody Cox Branch.
Did you give them the total cost?
Uh, the total, no, the, the total cost for that, it was included in the report. Sorry, I broke it down into the, into the manageable chunks, because again, the, internally, the, the thought was not, let's do everything at once, I, I, that price tag was pretty big.
When you give that price tag, is that for you guys doing it?
No, that, that's for...
Contracted out.
Yeah.
So we could probably do it cheaper for some of these.
There's, there are some things I think we could handle in-house. I will say not everything.
Right, right.
Yeah. But so the, the total cost from the construction side was six hundred and forty-eight thousand, and the engineering cost was thirty-nine, so we're talking, you know, almost seven hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know, again, not... and the engineering cost was thirty-nine, so we're talking, you know, almost seven hundred thousand dollars worth of, you know, again, not, I'm not proposing to do all of it at once. And we'll be submitting for grants and things like that and asking people's permission to go on properties and so. Cody Cox, we completed our survey of all of the pipe crossings from Billie Jean Jackson Park to West Road. The green marks are the indications where the pipes were sloped in the correct direction. Everything north of the blue line is the county, south of the blue line is the city. The yellow line is a, a pipe that we have that's on a flat grade, um, which isn't particularly good, but it's also not bad. We have one pipe in that system, uh, right next to the red one, or the yellow one, that is sloped the wrong direction, so we will be fixing that. Downstream, the, the pipes in the system in the city are sloped the wrong direction. And of particular note to concern is at Rose Street, we have an elevation out leaving our pipe of eight point four nine. Everything downstream of that should be lower. Instead, when you get to West Road, it's one and a half, almost one foot, four inches higher. So there's a significant amount of water piling up, piling up behind West Road that backs up further into the system.
Is that in the city?
That's in, that's in the city. I've communicated this information to, uh, their Department of Infrastructure and Development. They're aware of it, and I have a meeting with them tomorrow to follow up with them. The, the one in, the first wa- red line south of the, of, in, into the city is behind the, um, Westwood, or not Westwood, um, it's behind that one apartment complex.
And the camisou, old camisou.
Yeah, yeah. That one could potentially be taken, yeah, yeah. The, um, that could potentially be taken out. It's an old gravel driveway, I, I'm not sure what they're using it for, but there's three pipes in there that we could potentially just, you know, take out and be an easy fix. The city just spent a lot of money, though, going across West Road. I'm, I'm not sure what, if there's an easy fix for, um, that elevation bust. In the meantime, we're also still looking for ways to get our equipment back behind Cody Cox to get it cleaned out. We, we thought we had found an easement, uh, for an old alley that was running behind, uh, along Cody Cox. But unfortunately, it, it had disappeared in future plats when it got, got developed out there.
Was it on East Route?
It, it's the size of our equipment versus all the sheds and fences out there. I mean, we can, you know, the mini can get in, the mini excavator can get in so far, but the challenge with using it in some of these locations is you take a scoop and then you turn around and you go back to the street and dump it off, and then go back and scoop, and then you spend more time running it back and forth. And that keys into the environmental regulations. If we could just scoop it and drop it on the, on the embankment and open that drainage pathway up, things would be a lot simpler and easier. Was that? Yeah. So, but, you know, again, we're, we're, we're still moving forward trying to improve drainage on Cody Cox. Um, I wanted to talk about the, the Twelve Oaks study we've been working on. Twelve Oaks is a subdivision off of Crooked Oak Road, or Crooked Lane, rather. It drains, uh, across a, a piece of property that was an old, that is a horse farm right now. It, it, it floods Twelve Oaks, it floods Crooked Oak. What we found is that there is an old terracotta, basically, the red line that you see on the, on the picture on the left is, is the pathway of, of a terracotta pipe that was installed by a previous, uh, property owner that used to be a, a ditch in the natural drainage pathway for the area. The, the, the previous owner put in a pipe, buried it, and went on out of his business. Since then, you can see the pi- the middle picture is actually where that pipe terminates, which is just short of the trees on the northern part of the picture on the left. It's, it's, it's something we've been working on, it's just a study that we're trying to figure out, okay, we, we know this intersection and this area flood. What are the issues? And this is part of our drainage investigation to getting that area back open and, uh, draining better. Another area that we're working on is, uh, drainage out of Cedarhurst Park. I've had communication with Steve Miller. Basically, the, th- these pictures were taken on June third, so it wasn't, it was a large storm, but it wasn't one of our five hundred year storms that we've seen. So th- these folks are getting flooding on a more regular basis. A lot of the, the flow is coming out of Cedar Hill Par- or Cedarhurst Park, headed south into Tylos Drive, and then working its way through their drainage system. What we're proposing is to construct a swale, which is the red line that you're seeing on the right, and bring, intercepting that water before it leaves the park and tie it into an existing drainage swale, which then eventually, which bypasses all of the homes and works its way into their stormwater management system. Talking with Steve, he and the kid, he thought they could be doing the work, you know, coming up in, uh, October. So again, a- another place where we're looking at drainage issues. We just passed the, the resolution for the CTP letter, which included a drainage study for the Nanicoke Road corridor. The picture on the left shows all of the spots that we have received citizen input for concerns with drainage from, starting back from August. And every storm that we get, when, when one of these big storms, we add in new data points to that to start populating where our areas are. So that's what the different shapes on that map represent, different storm events that we've had and where we've gotten drainage calls. We're also highlighting, uh, the hotspots at Willow Creek, which you can see on the upper side, what, on the upper picture, what Nanicoke Road looks like when it floods at Willow Creek, and then also, uh, at Catch Penny Road, which is that bottom right picture. Uh, we're also working on, uh, with, with State Highway to improve the flow through Peggy Neck Branch, which is responsible for picking up a lot of the, the drainage off of Nanico- or rather, off of Old Ocean City Road. Right there at the bypass where Peggy Neck goes underneath it, which is by the railroad tracks just south of Purdue on Zion Church Road, there's a lot of erosion that is working its way off the banks of the bypass into Peggy Neck Branch. State Highway has already been out there once, cleaned it off. They, they've pulled back what they can, unfortunately, it's still just kind of sitting there, and we're one big, one or two big storms away from seeing that sediment wind up back up up in Peggy Neck Branch. Which, good luck to you. Which is why we're looking to, to something a little bit more permanent than just a, a, a temporary cleaning. With some way for them to, to set, to stabilize those soils and keep that dirt out of Peggy Neck. Drainage construction, so this is the stuff that we've actually been out moving dirt. The big one has been the improvements at, at Pemberton Drive on, at Anderson Mill Pond. As you may remember, on May eighteenth, we had a significant storm event. That little crumpled up piece of yellow down in the bottom left-hand corner is a, uh, two-person paddle boat that got stuck in the outfall pipe, causing significant damage to it and backed up the water, which is what you're looking at where you see all that riprap.
Where'd that come from?
It was on the embankment on...
Private residence.
Yeah, private residence, yeah.
Apparently wasn't tethered.
Yeah, in, in fact, the owner of the pond had specific, said, he had specifically talked to the folks and told them, look, fed out of my pond, they don't want it on here. And they just kinda pulled it up a few feet away, the water level rose, and we're left cleaning up the mess.
And it was responsibility there?
Good question.
Hey Dallas, tell them what was clogging up Cody Cox Creek.
Oh, yeah, awesome. So when, uh, the, the surveyors went out to, to Cody Cox to do their surveying, um, they were, there's, at that little gravel driveway I was speaking of behind Westbrook Commons, um, there's two pipes on top and there's one pipe on the bottom. The surveyors were out trying to dig around and get the inverted shot of the bottom pipe, and they couldn't seem to get it, so they got down there with their shovels and, uh, popped out a dead turtle. So there, there was some drainage obstruction, but yeah, there was a, a dead turtle in there preventing some flow going through. But from July twenty-third to August first, uh, we were working on the, the Pemberton Drive, Anderson Mill Pond. So that, that work is all tidied up. We'll be repaving that entire road, or that section of the road, rather, uh, this fall when the, when the paving contractors come back in.
It's not that old.
What's that?
It's not that old.
No.
That, that section of road is not that old.
No, no. In fact, if it wasn't for the damage from construction, it, it, it wouldn't have been on the paving schedule. Additional construction we've been doing, uh, we've been doing some ditch cleaning on Head of Creek Road. The three pictures on the left, um, the, the picture on the furthest left is what it looked like before we ditched. That middle picture shows that there was, in fact, a pipe there that had been sent to bed and in and leaves built up, so we got that cleaned out, and then, um, just continued that ditch on down the road to, to, to get positive drainage out of, out of that area and, and heading towards a, uh, an outfall. The three pictures on the right show the work we have been doing on Bent Pine Road. The upper picture is actually from the May eighteenth storm, or another location we saw damaged. Went in and replaced those, there was one pipe in there, we've added an additional pipe, so again, just trying to, whenever we have these opportunities to, to, to replace a pipe, we're making sure that we're increasing capacities to, to get these flows moving through the area. Uh, additional construction, this is on, uh, a little bit before the, uh, the Twelve Oaks property. This is, um, Crooked Oak Lane at Rockawalken Creek. We replaced all of the, uh, that, that pipe, it was, uh, it, it was old, it was damaged, there was a dip forming in the road. We got up there and replaced that work as well. So, and, and for my last slide here, this is the, uh, the citizen and assistant grants I was telling you about. So MEMA has these hazard mitigation grants, and they are available to homeowners with help sharing the cost of raising up their homes. So one of the biggest challenges that we're finding with helping folks in the community is, what do you do for the person that has built them their house in a localized bowl? There is no outfall in the area, there's no storm drain in the area, the water has no place to go, what do you do? And, uh, MEMA has these grants available that citizens can apply for to, to raise their houses. And, and, and that's some of what would be recommended.
After these storms in North Carolina, I expect there's some people around here that would consider, they might. I mean, the wife asked me, do we have flood insurance? I said, no, but from, if we had thirty inches of rain, we would be flooded where we live, and that's unusual, but that would happen.
Yeah, and the nice thing with these grants is you do not have to be within a flood plain to, to qualify. And the, there, there are several criteria that have to be met, and one of them is a cost benefit analysis. But if your project is less than a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, it automatically meets that cost benefit, which, you know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars goes a long way towards raising a house. There is a seventy-five, twenty-five percent split. The contact locally is actually in the Planning and Zoning Inspections Department, Marilyn Williams, we've been working with her. But they've just, they being the federal government, just released more money to MEMA for this project, or for this grant program. And one of the things that they're looking for is community-based improvements. So less, let's go raise individual houses, I mean, there is still money available for that, but they're pushing, what can we do systemically to help the most amount of people? Which I think is why this would be a good place to start for the Pratt Road improvements of, uh, of getting in there and, and helping with the flooding, and potentially also with Cody Cox.
Do you know if anybody in Wacomaco has taken advantage of this?
We have directed several folks to, uh, to Marilyn. I know one person was more interested in raising their outstructure, um, but this is really for primary residents, I don't believe. If, if you wanna raise a, a, a garage apartment, it, that doesn't really qualify.
I saw a lot of houses going up higher in Somerset County and Akamak County, right after Sandy.
Okay. So that'll open up to any questions.
No questions.
We got you throughout, I think, so.
Yeah.
What do you think we'll be reviewing next time you come back?
Um, I'm, I'm looking at, uh, the, the next drainage study I think we need to be working on is Levin de Shiel Road. That floods significantly, it's an area that does not have a clear, easy drainage path. We know where we wanna send it, it's just a matter of, it's a long haul trying to eventually, Levin de Shiel should be draining into, uh, Mitchell Pond. But it's, it's, it's a long ways from that, so we need to find a, a, a cost-effective way to, to address drainage out there.
What about Mount Herman Road?
Mount Herman Road is another one. That's really more on the state system. So it, you know, it is one of those locations that we continue to remind the state about as well. But, you know, but when they ask what our, what our number one priority is, I generally will tell them Peggy Neck, until that gets addressed, it's really the most bang for a buck of helping folks in that area. But yeah, so Levin de Shiel is, is the next one. I would also like to be able to prevent what are, um, where we are in the, in, in the application process for some of these projects with moving them through the MEMA grants. And again, we're, we're always working on drainage there. This month or early next month coming up, we plan to install new ditches on Fawn Drive. We had done a, a project to get survey of several hotspots, determine how to drain them, because they weren't. And, uh, Fawn Drive, which is off of Old Ocean City Road, that does drain into Peggy Neck, um, is what's on, on our immediate radar for, as far as a new ditch construction.
Well, um, I'd just say, on behalf of the council, thank you very much again for the presentation, Dallas, because I mean, you're, you're dealing with public works as a whole, and you have the day-to-day operations to attend to, and this sort of fell in, right in your lap, crashed into your lap out of nowhere. And it's, it could appear to be insurmountable, you know, what you're bringing in here on a regular basis, I think is great as far as, you know, the success that we're making as the county, uh, to, to resolve these issues, so I'm, I'm pleased with it.
Good, good, thank you.
The, the question I'd have for you, Wayne, would be, how do you think, budget-wise, where do you think we're gonna be filling in the blanks here? We're a little bit out from that right now, but it looks like we're gonna have to be directing funding in some areas.
I mean, we're gonna be starting to build the CIP in another thirty days. And, uh, to Larry's earlier point, you know, we, you know, while we don't know how this is ultimately gonna be funded, we have determined, for instance, at Pratt Road, what the issues are. So I think it would be incumbent upon us to, to embed projects where we've got our hands around what needs to be done in the CIP. I certainly think that we should provide, even if we're forward funding and we think that there's a way to get a matching grant, I don't think we should sit on our hands until we know where we can get money. We've got fund balance that we can use to forward fund. I think the, the, um, the challenge here is to find ways where we could forward fund without compromising our ability to get grant, matching grant funding. So we, we, we'll probably work pretty hard on looking at those sources of funds, uh, before we bring the CIP, but I would think that it's incumbent upon the county to have these kinds of projects where we know what has to be done in this coming, uh, CIP cycle, because, because we have residents who are being damaged.
You know, we've caught, um, a lot of grief in the past year or so, especially about the reserves the county has, set aside money. I'll bet you that a lot of counties in North and South Carolina wishes they had our reserve fund, because they're gonna need it. And that's one of the reasons why, why we keep a reserve fund, and that's a good example down there.
It's nice to be in a position where if we have to forward fund, we have the funds there to do that. And you're right, there was a river in North Carolina that, uh, that, that crested at fifteen feet above normal flood stage. Imagine the Wacomaco River at fifteen feet above normal flood stage.
We're low already.
Well, like I say, I know we've caught a lot of grief from some people about keeping these reserves and...
They're important.
One of the reasons we have.
Government office building would be riverfront property. Downtown sauce... Literally downtown Salisbury would call it.
Indoor swimming pool would hurt them.
One group suggested that if we had a, a natural disaster, we just raised taxes.
Too late then. Thank you very much. And Wayne, we have you for, uh, the last item.
Yeah, I gotta get my notes ready.
Sure. Thank you, Dallas. Thank you. Last item on the open work session agenda is the surplus sale of, uh, property at Barron Creek Road in Mardele's.
So council may recall that we originally purchased this property, uh, for two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That was the appraised value. It was nineteen and a half acres. Um, we have a contract in hand, I think it was in your, your packet, uh, to spin off two point seven five acres and the residents for a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's a no contingency contract. Uh, the purchasers already have a financing commitment in hand. Uh, from that hundred and forty thousand, uh, county would be liable for a six percent commission, which is eighty-four hundred. Because these folks are first-time home buyers, under Maryland state law, the seller pays for transfer, transfer and recordation, that's one thousand six hundred and eighty. So we would net approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars out of the sale, uh, whi- which, which would then mean that we'd have an eighty thousand dollar investment in what I'll call the stormwater management, uh, uh, pond. And I think the value, uh, to that, to that investment is that we now own all that stormwater management area in front of the former dam and the road and we have full control over it. Works out to about forty-seven hundred, forty-eight hundred dollars an acre, uh, for that pond land. And, uh, you know, I think it's a, I think it's a transaction we should move forward with. The contract, uh, has a settlement date of, I think it was October twelfth. We can't make that settlement date because we have to go to a public hearing, but I would not think the, um, buyers would have any angst about, uh, extending date for closing as long as they felt we had a deal. Um, I don't think there's any pressure on interest rates at this point in time that would cause them any heartburn, so.
Is that a good deal for the county? It looks like it's a good deal for them.
It's, I, I think it's, you know, I did some math there, Larry, and, and, and if, if you look at the original two hundred and ten thousand dollar appraisal, it was done on a comparable sales basis. They didn't do a cost approach. Uh, but if you took that two-ten and you assume that out of two, out of the nineteen and a half, you know, twenty-five percent of that value may have been land value, uh, you, you, you back into, uh, a value on the home, uh, of about a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, because you may recall that the exterior HVAC equipment was vandalized and was stolen. So you've got a home, uh, that's being sold as is with no warranties, with no air conditioning system. Uh, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for that size home is, uh, I think about sixty-eight dollars a square foot. Is, is it a great deal for anybody?
Plus it's over two acres?
It's, uh, two point seven five acres of, of, of sloped land, so.
We're going to end up with more money in that pond than what we really should have as far as acreage because.
Yeah.
Cut over timber, timberland with no values, about a thousand, two thousand dollars an acre. We needed it to do what we needed to do with it, so.
That's correct.
We've got more in it than what we probably should have, but we've solved a great big problem.
We've solved, the other thing is that Weston spoke with, was it MDE today, Weston? MDE? And we, uh, we will get a significant whip credit for this project as well because the original dam was built, when was it, Weston?
Mid seventeen hundred.
Mid seventeen hundred. So the accumulated sediment, right? Uh, we've got like two hundred years of sediment there and, uh, so addressing that and covering that area with uptake vegetation, uh, they're willing to give us a fairly significant whip credit, so that's further value.
Could create another pond for, have cover for the lightning.
Yeah, but then we wouldn't have the fish passage.
Well, um, yeah, and we're going to get, I mean, there's another portion of the property that's, we're looking at selling too, another small chunk.
There's a little, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so you get a slight.
I doubt that we'd get much value out of it, but yeah, we could sell it. Uh, the owner on the other side of the pond was interested in, so we could do that.
Yeah, so it's a small chunk.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, that wouldn't be an arms line if that would just be, oh, would you take?
Yeah, but this also gets, um, gets money off our, or not money, gets land off our rolls, gets land back on the tax rolls. So I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, you, maybe if we waited another year, maybe we get a better offer, but I mean, let's, you know.
Really didn't want to carry the house through the winter, the month.
Yeah, because, no one's living in there and it's.
Correct.
A good place for vandalism.
Tractive nuisance, so.
So, yeah, I mean, the quicker it sells, the better.
We thought it was, we thought it was an appropriate deal, that's why I'm glad.
Good. Anything else from your line? Thank you.
Thanks.
See you. Stand up.
You lose them one at a time.
I obtained a motion from council to adjourn from legislative session to go into, well, we already did all that. I obtained a motion from council to go, uh, to adjourn from legislative session to go into a closed work session pursuant to the local government article, section three dash three oh five B four, to consider a matter that concerns the proposal for a business or industrial op- organization to locate, expand, or remain in the state to protect the identity of the business identity.
So move.
Entity, excuse me. Second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Means adjourned.